I just wonder if any of your equipment is operable. Based on looking.
You'd be surprised at what we make work. There's no questions about that. That's just the breakdown of what would be included in that package. The laptop that...
So, the intention of this will be able to run live? Or is it the intention that you can actually edit better on the field?
This would allow us to go out on location, complete the... Let's say, take football game, for example. Complete the football game from start to finish. And when it's done, it's ready to go on the air.
Rather than have to edit half the fact.
Right. We wouldn't be able to broadcast live unless we had a cable drop from Time Warner. However, this will... If we did have a broadband internet connection, we can stream live over the internet. There may be a way that we can stream the internet signal back to our studio in Richland to the air to go live. Something we'll have to check into. The laptop that's listed below that is external. It'd be a laptop to go to run the live text software that comes with Video Toaster. That would allow us, say, we're going to a football game, to change text live while we're switching shots between two different players or coaches or whatever. A portable green screen that would allow us, again, say, we're at the football game, we have commentators, they'd be able to sit in front of the green screen and we could place them in a virtual set that looks like a professional studio. And I budgeted $230 for cables, just because it'd be cheaper for us to make our own cables than to purchase them all from a company that already has them pre-made. This will come out to about $14,174. Some additional equipment that we would like to get, three pairs of headphones, $15 each. Not a big budget there, but if you can imagine three people sitting in a studio right next to each other, listening to their video editing through speakers, it gets a little annoying. So, this will keep them from driving one another crazy and me... Driving me crazy as well. We also need one 19-inch LCD monitor to replace one for a PC that we currently have. We're currently borrowing a monitor from one of our board members, and I think he'd like it back, so we just want to get a monitor to replace that. We currently do not have any wireless microphones, so I'd like to pick up three of those. Those would be used for either producers to take out into the field in our television studio or with the Video Toaster out on location at a football game. The two audio compressors, one would be used for our master control system that we already have. What that would do is if we have a show that's recorded with low-level audio and one that's really loud, it just balances them out. So, when you're watching at home, you don't have your TV turned up for the low one, and when the new show comes on, it blares through your speakers. Another one would be used for the mobile system, just to balance our audio there. Three camera tripods at $125 each, just to replace some old ones that I've kind of built Frankensteined out of, like, three or four of them to get a couple of good ones. That comes out to $1,350. What we'll gain from this, I've kind of touched on what I think that we're going to gain as far as production value and quality of programming. Our producers that come in, they tend to get a little frustrated with what they have to work with. But, at the same time, I know they're very thankful for what we do have to offer, because, again, what we do have is better than nothing. So, that's one thing we will gain, and I believe that having new equipment will help access grow into a larger community organization and take hold of some features that maybe some of us can't even fathom could be taken care of. There are two options. Option A would be a one-time city investment of $35,000 to improve the quality of public access television. The other would be to increase our current annual contract amount from $56,000 to $67,666.67. Those are our two options. I favor option A, because if we try to save our money over the course of years, technology's going to change, it's going to get more expensive, and by the time we save up that money at the end of three years, it's going to take us $45,000 to do this. But, you know, a budget increase would be great either way, but I do favor option A. And I would like to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions at this point? This is a... Yes, go.
Well, thank you, Matt, for your presentation. Appreciate it. I did appreciate the mentioning of the underwriters and that your diligence and getting some of that financial support and encourage you guys to continue to do so. I think that is helpful and also valuable partnerships, and I think that's a great way to use the resources that are in our community as well. I was curious, too, when you talked about the future of ACTV, I was curious about the web, your web presence, and some of your thoughts on that as well, and if you could... I didn't get to hear much about that.
We do have a website, actv23.com. We do not have video as far as our shows on there. I'm currently working with some ideas on how to get shows up on the web, so if somebody wants to go watch Lois Whaley Show or Bob Whaley Show or Big Jim Show, they can go to our website without having to wait until it's on television. We've got some ideas, still sorting those out as far as ways to control bandwidth, so we're not paying a ton of money to have our videos on our server, but using, like, either Blip TV or YouTube or something like that, building a web interface around that, so that we can have those videos online for people to access. And I think that is one factor that will also help us grow, is people that do not have cable that live out in the county area, they would be able to become more involved with what we're doing.
Right. Thank you. Any questions?
First, I want to thank you for coming and just to speak a little bit about the value of ACTV 23. When I was in high school, some of my friends did a show, and two of them, out of about four of us, now work or employed... One works for a TV channel and the other one works for MTV, actually. So, really, it is a way for local youths, I guess, before at the time, and for OU students to get really good hands-on training and have fun while they're doing it.
Yeah, there's one, one of our producers in particular, he is now majoring in video production at OU, because he was involved with public access when he was in middle school through high schools.
So, it really does provide a great value, and it looks like you've done very well with it in the last two years.
Thanks.
Second, I have a question on the hours of operation.
Okay. Our hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from noon to 9:00 p.m., and then on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. The first year, we were open from 9:00 to 5:00, and I found I'd get there at 9:00 in the morning and sit around till, you know, 11:30 noon before somebody would show up. Then I got tired of watching daytime television, so I changed the hours, and it works out pretty well. Like I said, with our work-study students, that can work in the evenings, and then I have those two rotating Saturdays.
And a question I had about the actual equipment, and this is for anyone that might know, as we replace... As the government channel replaces some of their equipment, is there any mechanism where we could deed it to ACT 23?
Actually, a lot of the equipment that Scott has gotten rid of and replaced has been passed to me. We were on the air from the time we started until a couple of months ago using a government channel's old playback system. That was purchased in '98 by the government channel, and we've used it up till this point. So, I mean, it did its job, but it was time for replacement of that, and we were able to upgrade a little bit there. And, you know, there's also been a couple of cameras that Scott's been able to pass down to us. Again, they're already aged, but, you know, we use them as much as we can, too.
Sure. Thanks.
Just a couple of questions. You talked about 90 members. What does membership mean exactly?
Membership would be anyone that comes in to use the facility, to produce shows. If, say, Paul, you want to become a member, all you have to do is walk in and say, "I'd like to sign up for orientation." We can hand... We hand you a DVD. You listen to me talk on a DVD for half an hour, you answer some questions on a test, and you become a member. Then, from there, you'll have to be trained on the different equipment that you want to take out, whether it be the mini-DV camera or to use the television studio in our facility or to sit down and use the editing software. You go through different trainings for all of those.
Are the trainings also DVD or one-on-one?
Those are more one-on-one as far as using the software and the camera. Because I, you know... The basic orientation is more like how access works, what it is, what is expected of you, technical guidelines you need to meet, what you can and can't have in your programming, such as advertising and all that stuff.
So, that leads to another question in terms of your underwriters. They do not advertise?
No, it's a no-call-to-action. It basically says, it's kind of like WU, like Athens Community Television, like, and cur distributing for their support of public television in Athens. They are located here, phone number, website. That's it.
Okay, and do you have a percentage of people actually have their own equipment that used to broadcast, I guess? Or is that a very small amount?
A small amount. We do have some people that have their own cameras. A lot of the students that come in that don't have a camera and they use our camera, they can go to the Autumn Library and use editing systems there. So, you know, for students, that's great. For community members, they don't have the luxury of going to OU and using their equipment.
How compatible is that when you have that? Is it pretty much universal, all the equipment that you're dealing with here?
Well, we've ran into a few problems where someone has gone to OU to edit their program, and then they didn't really know what they were doing, so they saved their files, came to Access, tried to open up what they've already done, and it's not backwards compatible. They did something in Access and then moved to OU. They can do that. They can't go from newer to older.
Okay.
Matt, could you remind people who might not be aware of it where the funding for access television comes from?
Right. The funding comes from the cable franchise fee, which is a... Which is what the city charges Time Warner to operate their infrastructure within the public right-of-way, basically. That's where we get our funding, is the cable franchise fee.
And we do know that there's been efforts on the behalf of Time Warner to lower or even eliminate that fee, so that's something we need to keep in mind also as we're going along. Any other questions? Matt, I know you brought... Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just wondering what the... You went over the budget since you took over, but what was it the previous few years?
Before I took over, I believe they were receiving $56,000 as well.
So, it was basically that amount?
Yeah, it was. Like, when I put in a proposal to the city, there was no, like, bid... Wasn't really a bid process for, "We're going to do this for X amount of dollars." It was, "Here's a contract. What can you do with it with this X amount of dollars?" And I think we've done very well as far as keeping our budget strict and tight and working with what we have, but I think it is time for somewhat of an upgrade. And if...
Mayor? I would point out that it's been... The amount of funding's pretty much been flatlined for many years for the access TV system. Essentially, what you're seeing is this franchise pays for our government channel as well as what we, you know, what we give to them. And I know over the past, there have been fusions of cash every, probably every 10 years, I suspect, type, to beef up the equipment, both in our government channel as well as here. It's one of those things that they don't have the ability to actually put in capital improvements all the time in their budget. These things, as you know, get obsolete real quickly, as anybody knows any piece of electronics.
And a lot of this equipment is equipment that was inherited three years ago.
Right. When we... When I took over as the executive director, everything was passed down from one end to the other. I do have some guest speakers I'd like to introduce. I know they're anxiously waiting.
Matt, I'm just going to interrupt quickly. I know they've been waiting patiently. I'm going to ask if they want to make a statement that'll be even shorter than the three minutes we mentioned before, because we have... We've spent more time on this than we had expected.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Whoever wants to go first. Just go to the podium here.
And just like always, you need to introduce yourself. Tell us where you live.
Good evening. My name is Robbie James. I'm the co-producer and production director of I Think I Can Films, a small nonprofit documentary film company located here in southeastern Ohio. I wanted to share with you the wonderful experience my co-producer, Lizbeth Beasley, and I've had in the past year and a half associating with ACTV 23 and director, CEO Matt Green, and to express our deep appreciation for this wonderful community resource. In 2007, after a 20-year hiatus from making short films and videos, I decided to go back into the field of filmmaking. Lizbeth and I established our company, starting from scratch with very little money. I live in Corning in southern Perry County, and Lizbeth lives in Gloucester in Athens County, and we knew there were no resources to speak of in my area, and several people told us to go and visit Matt at ACTV 23. And what a wonderful resource that's turned out to be for us. From the first day I walked into the station in June of 2007, Matt Green has been answering our many hundreds and thousands, thousands of questions. He's been generous with his time and his knowledge, and as we've worked on our projects, he's consistently given us sound advice that has added much to the quality of the programs we wanted to produce. We've had full access to cameras and editing equipment that have allowed us to produce two half-hour biographical programs that focus on people in southeastern Ohio and two short films on miniscule, miniscule budgets. We've learned the technology involved in current film production, as well as the type of equipment we want to be using in our own company, and we're about to purchase our own first camera with Matt's recommendations. Our programs and company mission are focused on education and inspiring stories. We've had tremendous positive response to our first program concerning an older adult literacy student with learning disabilities. Our short version of this film was posted on YouTube and has been the focus of discussion on national adult literacy lists, as well as being used in adult literacy classrooms to encourage older adults who want to earn their GED. Because we've had access to ACTV 23's camera and editing equipment, we were able to have a 19-year-old adult learner with dyslexia intern with us and participate in our second half-hour program as our videographer. In the many hours I've spent at ACTV 23 over the past year or so, I've witnessed firsthand the time, ingenuity, and energy Matt devotes to maintaining cameras, computers, and broadcasting equipment that is aging and could best be described as on-ramp. He uses lots of soldering irons and time. He constantly strives to find ways to update software, expand programming, and innovate the station. ACTV 23 provides a singular opportunity for people in Athens and the surrounding area to have a way to express their views, their creativity, and to be a part of the community. My partner, Lizbeth, and I feel that the plans and ideas to update equipment and improve this important community resource deserve your attention and financial support. It will be money well spent, and we feel really privileged and blessed to have been able to have access to this resource. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Fitch, and I live here in Athens, Ohio, and I'm the owner of Magus Films Productions. And my time spent with Matthew Green has basically just been learning about how the whole video production, graphics designs, all that stuff works. And what I've gotten out of the facility has been that, essentially, a good understanding of how these things work. On top of that, working with other individuals, being able to meet and mingle with others down there who are interested in the same thing. I haven't done a lot within making my own films, but I've learned a lot by being able to help out a lot in working with others. It's been... It allows my... Allows us a place at regular intervals to get together, to discuss things, ask Matt all kinds of thousands of different questions that could be asked, which he's been very helpful at coming back and giving us those answers, and if not, being able to find out what we do need to know. I've seen our... I've seen our community use it as a focal point for information on city and county and other sources for places to lay out information for just the general public. Other services are there for people just within small, little social groups to voice their opinions and stuff, be that Robbie or Bob Whaley Show, the Hymn Timers, other church and political and social groups, to use it for a place to express their concerns and so forth. Nonetheless, a place for fun, just a place if you go out and shoot a family, you know, a family video, stuff like that. It's a place you can bring some of that stuff and show it, you know, and allow, let all the cable grid and all those who get to enjoy that to be able to see that and so forth. And I'm just here to tell you that Matt's done a wonderful job, I think, at running this for the past three years and has really, really made a big difference, not only in our, you know, in our access channel, but just in the community itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Balkam, Gloucester, Ohio, more known as Big Jim. It all kind of just came at me a real shock with ACT and went down with an idea to do a community show, and Matt just kind of, like, finally gave me the break. And from there, it just went, it was a bandwagon. I got community issues out that I thought I never could do, and I think with ACT has shown that the name of it, Athens Community Television, is the focal point, and that's what I strive for. New equipment. We really need it. I was at the game the other day with one of the three cameras we had. Had to be plugged in for six hours. The battery died in three minutes, so I couldn't do a show that day. I had fun on the sidelines, but it wasn't the reason why I was there. I just think that with better equipment and better issues to deal with, we can strive for not only college students, but high school students, maybe middle age, to get interested in this and go further. I hope I do, and without ACT, I don't think I'd be where I am today. So, I thank you, Matt, and thank you for letting us talk to you guys.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for your presentations. I think we had chances to ask questions. Think about this again. This is part of our budget discussion, so we'll be fitting this in in a few weeks.
All right. Thanks, guys. One more quick question, please.
Okay, we have another question. Last one.
We, as most people know, we're trying to work with a really tight budget this year. If we were able to fund some of this equipment, what would be the top priority?
The most important things would be the cameras, because we can, you know... That would be the most important thing as of now. The cameras and the mobiles, the mobile setup or system would be very important. The only thing with that is we couldn't get the mobile system without getting the cameras, because then it would be useless. So, the cameras would be the most important thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Couple other items that we need to discuss, financial personnel. In the printout that Chris Nysley talked about, it was mention of a couple of projects. One of them was Circle Drive. Circle Drive is the road that makes a circle from Columbus Road at the old Sears Building, which is new to you now, and circles up behind Athens Dental Depot and comes back out onto Columbus Road again. Circle Drive. We have a large project going in down there. Hickory Creek is doing a quite large nursing home and retirement community there with all ancillary services added to it. Probably 150 jobs at that one location. Between the people employed there and the people who are living there, there's going to be a large increase in traffic, and so we're discussing... We have... We're discussing improving Circle Drive from both ends to make it a good two-lane street all the way through. In 2007, we passed an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to approach Appalachian Regional Commission for a grant, and the service director made the pre-application, and at this point, the ARC has said, "We will grant you the... We will grant you $250,000 for that." Is that correct?
It's based on submission of the final full application.
So, they're bypassing part of the application process. They've approved the whole project with further information based on the pre-application. So, that's $250,000 grant from Appalachian Regional Commission. The project is rated at, if I see, $645,000 in the street budget. And so, we have quite a bit of matching funds to make up. The builders, the developers of the project, the Hickory Creek project, have said they would come up with 25% of that amount, which still leaves us almost over $300,000. And the plan has been to assess the property owners who are benefited by the increase in this road, and at this point, I know that I believe there are four businesses at the lower part of Circle Drive, and there are four or five... There are four houses and a business in the upper part of Circle Drive, if I recall. And so, the discussion is, how do we achieve an applicable formula for assessment or searching for funding elsewhere? First of all, the Service Safety Director, if you may, have any thing to add or suggest at this point?
If it's... If we're... Again, we have... This is a second access road we've applied for. You remember the first one being the Holzer Clinic, no funds from the city were to be spent. In this case, it's a platted road, Circle Drive, and we can start the assessment procedure on all the property owners if you choose to do it. To look at the assessment procedure, you'd want to... It takes several acts of council to do that, and there's various ways of doing the mix. If I remember, there's three different ways up hand. One is by linear foot or frontage of the road. The other one, which I think has to do with the actual assessment of the property in terms of real estate tax and using it proportionally. I forget what the third method is. I think it's where everybody in the city pays. It's a general conducive to improvement of the city. If we're trying to do this, and it... What I'm hearing from the Service Safety Director is this has actually been stepped up in the timetable a little bit faster, so we need to go... So, if we're going to do the assessment process, we have to get that moving. Again, we're talking about a good chunk of money, though. Originally, they were talking about $280. They're down to $250, so we're...
Two...
Yeah, that's right. And one of the issues with the way the Hickory Creek, or no, excuse me, Holzer Clinic Road has played out, it's been very difficult from the city's administration standpoint to administer that grant with you have different players coming in and, you know, paying into what would have been the city's matching point. So, what I've heard from the street director is we almost need the commitment from council to expend that money and then go back and get it, so that we've got... So, when we submit to Appalachian Regional Commission, say, we're committed to this roadway and then we'll... Because if we don't do it that way, we won't have the funds in place to actually build this road.
And hit the timetable.
Right. They're saying spring of 2009.
2009?
2009, May.
May.
They would let the funds.
Wow. Councilmember Phillips?
Couple of quick questions. One, would the $25,000 be then that plus their portion of the assessment? Because it seems...
25%.
25%. Is that what they consider their portion of it? Or would it be that plus their portion of the assessment?
My understanding was that was what they considered their percentage of benefit from the project.
But if this project wasn't happening, we wouldn't be building a road there, right?
Right now, still, that one section is still unmaintained, so do you write it right? Yes.
Could we clarify that for a minute? We have... We have, and I did the research on this. We have a section of road that serves four businesses that is not up to standard, and the developers were supposed to pay for that, right? I got you all that information. So, we do have that as well. They have none.
So, that portion of the road...
Had... Was never built to proper specifications.
Right. And it has not been accepted by the city yet, although it is a roadway, a public roadway in the city, so it does need to be brought up to standard. So it does need to be brought up to standards.
The other quick question I had, the houses that you're referring to, don't they currently access Columbus Road directly? So they don't actually get any benefit from this?
I've asked that question of three different people today, and nobody can answer that.
I think they all have driveways onto Columbus Road.
Oh, yes. That, I know that part, but, so the road, instead of having frontage on the road, they actually have backage on the road.
It's steep, though. They would continue to use their driveway on the Columbus Road, I would think.
I've, I've asked that question, and nobody seems to be...
Wouldn't we want to have someone who is a specialist in this make that determination? I mean, that is the way you would normally proceed?
Yeah. Mayor?
Again, it depends on what assessment method you choose. I mean, if you start saying, okay, rather than talk about frontage or backage, just say the cost and the value of the lot at this point in time, or a consideration of that. And again, the process is that you have to, if there's somebody contested, you have to get an assessment board put together, too, which will take time.
I got your start.
What?
Where you got your start, right?
Yes. One of my starts.
Point of clarification. So the project's approximately $650,000. The grant will pay for $250,000. So we have a $400,000 balance. Is Hickory Creek committing to one quarter of the remaining $400,000? So they are committing to $100,000?
That's my understanding.
And then we would have an additional $300,000?
There's a little bit of room there with contingency, so that's why I think he came up with the $75,000.
Okay.
Yeah, but in that 75...
Well, 75 to 100,000 is what they're committing to, if I'm right.
Did they pay the original engineering also?
They paid some preliminary design engineering. In your packet, you should have a copy of the application that has the proposal from Jeff Main. I may have only made two, so, along with all your research, I had sent that out, too.
Well, it's a very sorry story. Hope it doesn't ever happen again. Same characters in both cases, though, sometime, some overlap there.
And, and I forgot what I was going to say. A lot of...
Yeah. First question is, what was originally conceived for funding for this? When the grant was originally written and we didn't know how much we were going to get, what was the conception then at how much the developer would put in versus how much the grant would fund?
A couple of things have occurred. In the same ordinance, you authorized the administration to enter into agreements or apply for grants for Holzer Clinic and this Hickory, the Circle Access, Circle Drive Access roadway. At the time we applied for Holzer, we were viewed as a distressed county by Buckeye Hills, Buckingham Valley Regional Development District. So that one went through when that, so it was applied this year for Circle Drive. We're now transitional, which became a 50-50 percent. So I just submitted it 50-50, just saying applicant and grant, and just as a pre-application until this came back. So that's why we're here now, in order to have a full application and enter into agreements and a council's approval.
My understanding at the time, in consideration of both of these projects, is that if we're talking about helping with applying for grants to build access roads to private businesses, that the match would be paid by the private businesses and not with taxpayer funds. And I feel very strongly that we have a lot of infrastructure needs with our existing roads and water and sewer, and that it isn't a fair or wise use of our limited taxpayer resources to be building new projects that benefit a private enterprise. So whichever way we proceed, whether the developer pays for it, or we, because the existing access road was not built to city spec, we assess everybody who's using the access road. I would not, I would not be inclined myself to include properties that already have access to an adequate public street and make them pay for it. I would say the businesses that use that access road. You know, to me, that seems like the fair way to pay for it.
And that would mean that, I mean, this project wouldn't be being done if it weren't for the Hickory Creek development. And my, so my opinion is that they should find money for the remainder of the cost. Even though it was unexpected, it's, we wouldn't be doing it if it weren't for that development. And they need emergency access from two points, as I understand, because of the nature of the development. And the other businesses have access to a road already, even though it's not up to spec. It's a separate issue that that road's not up to spec, I think. So that's, that's my opinion.
But let's just go back and say that we have to repair the road that all those people are using, the one that was never, we never did right, that we allowed to happen spontaneously. And that should not be Hickory Creek's expense. That should be, well, I guess we've already taken our, our cost out of the one person's hide, but, I mean, there were, the previous mayor gave, showed me where it was and said, "You've got to make sure that they pay when it's finally done." So at least half of it has to be for that, from that development. I mean, you have a $750,000 invested property, and you've probably, I mean, one of the lots down there, the one that had asphaltic materials on it a few weeks ago, has, is on the market for almost that much money. You know, so it's made, many people have made much money on the sale of these things, and they should have developed it properly.
I'm not arguing with that.
Well, I know, but that's half the cost, isn't it?
I couldn't say, but I would say...
I think if you looked at the detailed engineering, there's really only a call for a three-inch overlay of the asphalt for the existing paved section. But when they say, you know, in an arc access road, it comes up to state, federal highway kind of specifications, so it would be lighting and the whole thing.
How about the turn radiuses? Those have to be changed.
There's some issues there around that Ginder's property.
No, no, I mean, the turn radius down at the, where it hits Columbus Road, that is, I mean, just from going through the station project, that was such an exacting process.
So am I getting this right? Because of the ARC requirement, that first section of road will have to be built to a much more expensive spec than it would actually be.
No, I'm saying, actually, that would not be the majority of the cost, other than the lighting and the other things that go along. I'd have to look into a little more detail on that.
Does it include bike path, bike access? Does this include sidewalks?
You mean sidewalks, or just enough lane infrastructure?
No, but their plans generally call for eventually some sort of back along the river.
No, no, but I mean, does, is there a sidewalk going down the hill? Is there a, is there a bike path going down that hill?
I don't believe so.
And these plans are, neither of those would be included?
No, the bike path is separate on the project itself.
There was always, you know, in the old plan thing, which we sometimes look at, there was a question about accessing it, since most people live on that side, right?
So...
Irrelevant.
Did I understand you correctly that a three-inch overlay would bring it up to city standards, except for the lining and stuff like that?
I believe that's what the plans call for. I don't, I forgot to bring my copy here.
Because we had the problem with the road not being up to par in that other development when they did Cory. Have they done core samples to see if it's adequate?
I don't know if Main had done that in his preliminary design work or not.
And I think the reason Member Coon asked that is because she uses that road, and I use it at least weekly, and it, it does have more problems than three inches of asphalt that it's probably going to solve. So we would probably need further engineering, which is included in this amount, by the way. This remainder of $300,000 includes more engineering, final engineering costs also. So, but, what the mayor and the Service Safety Director are saying is, if we're interested on, in upgrading any part of the road and utilizing this grant, we have to authorize an expenditure of those funds and then look at a methodology of retrieving them through assessment of whomever at whatever time. And so that's what we need to decide, if not now, then very shortly.
Just a question about administration of assessments. Is that a difficult process? Does it make it more cumbersome? Is it...
It's a lengthy process. And it can be difficult, contentious, obviously it'll be contentious.
Requires a basic council saying, I think it's a, I think it takes a resolution saying that there needs to be an assessment. You have to have a design in place, then you actually have to say you're going to assess the property owners, and you have to state the method of it. Somewhere in a higher revised code, the method is listed in there. And if there's a contesting of it, I believe the next step, of course, is to actually set up a citizen board to evaluate the assessment methods. And at that point, it doesn't have to be 100% assessment, but it sounds like that's what we want to do in the main here. The thing is that it's, it probably can't run fa, it wouldn't run faster than us trying to get the grant at this point.
Didn't we do this with the sidewalk on Stewart Street?
Yes, you did. So you remember the method there.
So we could just use that ordinance as a...
Yeah, we have a...
I mean, it wasn't that tough.
No, it wasn't. There wasn't anybody contesting it. My experience was with Kenny Drive at the time, and that required an assessment board evaluation, which I was on at the time.
You can bet this one will have some, too. And if we lose, then we pick up the difference, don't we?
Yes.
After the, that's why the professional assessor seems to be important at this point. Because if somebody comes in with a hotshot attorney and says, "That isn't up to the, you know, that isn't a fair assessment," then users would end up paying the balance.
I think the assessment board is actually the, the appeal process, but I may, there may be another step after that.
But then the city pays. If you give relief, then who's going to pay it but the city? They don't go back and reassess it, which is why the assessment...
So, yes, Member Gosman?
So, I mean, right now, I'm not favoring an assessment. It sounds like it might be a little bit risky. I'm of the opinion that the main development there should be paying the majority of the costs. And what's wrong with that road is, in my opinion, I mean, it's tied to this, but it's, it's not the overriding concern here, I don't think, in terms of cost. So what if an assessment procedure doesn't go through? What's, what comes next? I'm not saying that it won't, but if it doesn't...
Well, it depends what the vote is. I mean, if everybody feels the way you do, then it's another matter, but I personally would favor assessment.
But if, if an assessment, if we, if we voted for assessment, set up the assessment board, they would approach each of those property owners and each of those property owners would be given an amount that they were going to pay, and they could argue that. And if they won the argument, what Member Bain is saying is, the city would pick up the difference there.
So I'm asking, if, what if we don't do assessment?
And if we don't do assessment...
Is there any possibility that's to go through with private funding being transferred or promised to the city?
We'd ask the property owners straight on to pay their, the full amount. That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then the question is whether they do that or not, and where the grant goes for or not.
And we still don't have the initial part repaired, which has never been built properly, which has massive holes in it, which is...
Yeah.
But with the parallel process that it, that was used with the ARC grant on the Holzer Access Road, they provided, the Holzer provided the cost share for that grant so that there was not a city outlay. Could the same argument, I hear Nancy, what you're saying historically about the other road that was put in, but could the same argument that could be made? It's an ARC grant again, and the developer comes up with the match.
And then could be repaid that through assessment?
Right. And then they pay it upfront, and then we don't have the problems with the, I mean, we will still have the problems with the lengthy assessment, but we won't have put the city funds up, just as we didn't put the city funds up for the Holzer. That's my only point, that sentiment seemed to be very strong not to be putting up city money in that case. Could the same be said here?
Because there was, I mean, the strength came because it was 50,000 or 60,000, right? Wasn't that the amount we were worried about? Wasn't that right?
What was the amount of match?
For Holzer?
For Holzer.
Yeah, that's the portion we're talking about.
And there was no right-of-way there? There was no existing street there?
Part of their match was actually giving us easements and deeds, as well as some of the design. Was it design or just the actual construction? In one sense, we're talking, one was, one's platted, one isn't. I don't think that's a big difference, one way or the other. Depends on if you want to try fixing the entire section of the road and make sure all the people on the road pay or not. Or if you want to go through, I mean, you know, we can, as nothing says we have to chase these grants down.
You could always abandon the road and give it Hickory Creek.
Well, I mean, Sherry can't drive to work. It makes no sense.
Do we have a direction that we want to go with the, again, in order to qualify for the grant? And if we, if we tied this all to, to the lowest, what I'm calling the lower section of the road, the flat portion of the road, would the ARC grant still be available to us?
Well, it's there until such time as we don't submit a full application and expires. But I don't see the dollar amounts changing, if that's the question. They, what it is, is they have offered $250,000 in grant funds for this roadway.
But our expenditure would be somewhat less.
You're talking about developing just half the road, not the upper circle part of it?
Yeah.
That, that could very, may very well change the grant.
Okay.
I can find that out, though.
That was, that was the question.
They'd have to cut it back, because that would be almost total funding for that.
Oh, yeah.
And it was a 50-50, right?
Yeah.
So it's only half of it.
Well, actually, we got less than 50-50.
Sign of the times.
Yeah.
One of the, one of Councilmember Bain's suggestions was, was authorizing a qualified assessor to look at the properties and tell us what, how we could proceed, what we could expect from this. Maybe that's a...
I don't know.
...an action. I, I, because I don't know either. I, it's, we have, we have quite a bit of difference to make up.
We're going to have to buy right-of-way in the back. We're going to have to pay to have dirt removed from the right-of-way, and we have a law that says you're not supposed to put dirt on the right-of-way without our permission. I mean, there's a lot of ambiguity. And remember, this is the place that has the wonderful sinking pump station very close to it, so I don't know about that road either.
I'm looking, is there some action that we want to take here?
Well, I support assessment. Maybe you can find four people that do.
And the assessment will be paid for by...
The benefit, either benefiting or front-footage would be the two appropriate ways to do it, the owners of the property.
But who would, to hire a professional to come in and assess, that gets done by...
That would have to be included in the price that we eventually assess, wouldn't it?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I don't, this is all news to all of us.
I would suspect we, I mean, if we do the assessment, we're probably going to see a challenge from some of those property owners that wouldn't have had to pay anything otherwise. And so that, in my, I think that that's probably going to be a difficulty we'll face.
And that would be if the...
I could be completely wrong, of course.
But that would be if the assessor determined that they would have...
Fear issue?
Yeah.
I think that somebody who buys a piece of property has a reasonable expectation that the road to their property would be in good shape and stay in good shape. I mean, I, I think they pay that. The fact is, it isn't, and it hasn't been kept in good shape, so...
Well, I'm guessing that the road has been beat up by the equipment traveling over to prepare the land back there? Is that...
I don't think so.
No, or...
I mean, I think it was not in good shape before, was it?
I don't recall it ever being in wonderful shape, and I've been there a long time. It was never any good.
Let us, let us put up this assessment route for first reading, and if it doesn't go, then it doesn't go. And we'll, we'll work with the Service Safety Director and the mayor to, to get the language right.
Okay. As I say, should, the process is in higher revised code. I think I can probably dig it out some notes someplace.
Well, again, we, I think we just recently used a process. It's the same for... It's the same for a sidewalk or a street or...
Pretty much.
Whatever. I just fill in the blanks, and so, but let's do that, and we'll go from there. That'll give us something to respond to.
Okay. Again, sooner or later, we're going to have to commit to whether we have the funds or we're pulling up the funds, or can, somebody has to do the match, so either we go for it, and again, Andy was, the discussion, not trying to not commit to it, not put the money on the side to do that. It was, is a logistical nightmare. In other words, okay, let's say, we're committing to it as a city, in that sense, saying we're going to, we're going to come up with the local match somehow. How we get that local match, I assume, is from assessment, but the question is how fast that will take if we're trying to get this done by spring.
Oh, well, the assessment process would not...
Take too long?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would take too long, so...
Can I for one more suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Can the administration also approach Hickory Creek and ask how much they'd be able to come up with?
I think that discussion came back...
Sort of in parallel?
That discussion usually has been a 25%. I think that's what you were hearing most of the time. I haven't, I haven't had that many discussions to see if it's changed, though.
Okay. Thank you. So that's where we'll go there. Now, another, another street, Carpenter Street, Andy Stone from the Streets Department has applied for some Issue One money that used to be Issue Two. We've gotten Issue Two funds for 100 years now, it's called Issue One, so it's new. But Carpenter Street, the brick area from, I believe, from Congress Street to Eastlake Street, he's, he has applied for a program to take the bricks up, do some sewer repair, stabilize the base, put the bricks back down.
Storm sewer repair? Clarify that.
Storm tunnel.
Santray?
Storm.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, yes. We've all heard the stories of those mysterious storm tunnels that run under that area. We may get to see one face to face. This project is preliminarily estimated by, at 600, basically $620,000. We are approved or very...
Pretty much on the top of the list.
At the top of the list to get a grant for $440,000. And so that leaves us, I've lost my numbers.
Well, the request tonight, we have a local in-kind contribution of about $133,000, and local revenues will be about 43 and 1/2. We're not requesting that tonight. We will, once the project's been awarded and go through that process, but there...
Actually, what we're looking for is about $40,000 in engineering fees. We need to do some engineering to submit with this grant, preliminary engineering. Again, this is, will involve taking all the bricks up, doing the storm sewer work, stabilizing the base, and installing bricks again. And so that, a large part of that will be our in-kind match for the final grant, but we are required to submit some preliminary engineering with our application.
Well, our application, if I can clarify, has been submitted, and again, it's number one on the district list, but what the Street Director has requested is if he can go ahead and get that in the process for an appropriation out of this year's fund, so he can issue the RFQ and get someone in place by the end of the year to start on it.
So that we could actually start in 2009, it would be a 2009 project.
On his project schedule, he had engineering design beginning on 1/1 of '09 and then ending mid-March. The idea is that we can get all to this, you know, construction starting in July.
So are we doing it in-house or out-of-house?
This is for out-of-house. He said he really needs an engineer for the design.
But the $13,000 we had in the budget request from Streets for people in...
In '09?
Yeah.
That's the brick work, the actual, pick up the bricks and tape them in.
Pick up the bricks work, so it's going to be a blend of a contract and a...
And...
Two separate issues. That'll be like a construction in kind, what he's requesting is the funding be appropriated this year for his engineering, to have an engineer design the work.
So how much of his time will be devoted to this project, roughly?
I'm sure he'll be the project, ultimate project engineer.
Project manager.
And if, so how much would it cost if we didn't do it in-house? It would probably be 1.5 million or something with the brickwork?
Well, the in-kind of dollars he has is $133,000.
As part of the $620,000.
Probably, with asking for 43 and 1/2, 403, 400 in cash revenues.
So the...
But tonight, again, we're just asking whether or not we can have the engineering appropriated this year, so we can get someone under the contract to start the design work in January.
And that is strictly for the storm tunnels and then how to put the bricks down?
There's going to be some change of radius, he said, to, like, the fire department, that's one of their issues, is they come around the curve and kind of straighten that out. That's an issue.
Come around what curve? Are you talking?
No, so he indicated that there's some radius, he really, I asked him...
Correct vertical coil, correct generics, GM metrics on the western end of the project.
On the western end of the path.
Yeah, so that would probably be the Congress end. We condition existing base to either soil stabilization, concrete, or asphalt base placement.
Okay.
Remove existing curb and gutter, remove and replace sidewalks.
I was just curious on, you know, because we were always told before how much it would cost to do it in brick, and this is considerably less, and that's why I was, that's why I was trying to figure out what was happening.
Well, when you say less, I mean, we're talking about, what, two blocks for $600,000, so...
Yeah, but it always costs millions.
If that's the brick portion...
That's what I mean, so it's not cheap either.
But think about, well, I mean, it is. You're saving money.
I think when I was speaking to Andy Stone regarding the work that he did on Union, was it last year or two years ago?
Last year.
The brick, I mean, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but he saved a lot of money by doing it in-house compared to hiring out.
That was exactly my point.
Yeah.
If we think that this is a worthy project, and it is certainly a cost-saving project based on what we've known, is it worth it now to do an ordinance to authorize the $40,000 in preliminary engineering? That's the question for tonight.
I support that, I think.
I would support that.
So we'll put that up, and that may need to be suspended at least first or second reading?
I think he'll be comfortable if it's put up at first reading after that to go ahead and issue the RFQ, and of course, he wouldn't award until the funding is...
Then fine, we can do that. So we'll put it up, we'll have it up for reading next Monday.
Can I just add?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Just briefly, I just wanted to say that I think the brickwork is an important identity to Athens, and I, this is one of our main thoroughfares, it does have a lot of brickwork on it.
We had been warned by the previous administration that we would probably lose the bricks on that street, so this is, this is a really good thing.
That's what I was trying to get at before.
Yeah. So...
Thank you.
That was my miscellaneous, oops, the auditor has a miscellaneous.
I have big miscellaneous, things that we've talked about, you and Nancy and the mayor have handouts.
Did you have a PowerPoint presentation?
This is miscellaneous. Yeah. You're going to hate me for starting this at 9:00 after we've been here for two hours, but some of these issues are kind of important. What I'll do is, Ray has been working very, very hard to get this information together, and there are write-ups and backups for these issues, but we would like these things to go through this year. We need some adjustments in our books. These are pretty much auditor issues, and some of them have come up at council. Internal Service Fund, cost allocation, we just recently, council just appropriated some money to make that transfer, the Internal Service Fund is the one that pays for mechanics and part of Ron Forrest for computers. That's the only revenue for that fund, so what I'm talking about to begin with are these cost allocations for services from one fund to another. It's basically what you might call overhead, indirect costs in a private business. And so the first one has to do with internal service, first page. Second page shows how the formula he used to allocate based on vehicles and number of computers per department, and what the amount should be. One thing about this is it looks like next year's budget would be about the same as this year, no increase should cover it. What I'll do is, I think I'll go through this quickly, and then you can maybe absorb some of this information later.
This is recommendations, right, Kathy?
Right. This is how we think that these cost allocations should be done, and we think that they, they should be done, that we shouldn't drop these, that these are necessary revenue and expenses for the different departments. That one's pretty straightforward. The second one we have is the allocation for the internal admin, and this is based on the cost of business for other departments that the general fund departments do, such as mayor's office, auditor's office, and treasurer, law director, lands and buildings. The formula for this is based on the number of transactions processed and the dollar value of the budget. No transfers are included, of course, for departments already supported by the general fund. So the second page shows the departments. We have added the garbage fund, and I'm not sure why over the years there was no money in that one, it's a smaller fund, and as you can see in the sewer fund, there was no money appropriated this year, but in the past there has been. The formulas don't reflect the full cost. The third page shows a full cost estimate with the number of transactions by department and their 2008 budget. These formulas are mostly based on last year, although adjustments could be made for this year. Some money was already appropriated for most of the funds this year, but a few of them, sewer did not have any money appropriated, and a few of them came up short according to the formulas we had been using. So what I'll probably do is send out some information on that at the end of the week, and you can decide how you want to do that. As I said, this is less than full cost. We think that the auditors would think that's reasonable, because we're not charging, there's no, no chance of charging more than what we should be doing by doing that. Council can also decrease and increase as you see fit if you think the funds can't, can't support it, or you don't think that our suggestions, you think they're too much or too little, that's something you can think about. But we would like to have a formula in place that's applied to everybody, but when there are extenuating circumstances, if a fund, say the sewer fund, ends up with an emergency project that is very expensive, and we feel that they can't afford that, then it's up to council to say they don't have to make those transfers for that year, but I think that should be done on individual basis. We'd like to have a formula that's applied across the board, otherwise. So that's the next three pages, has to do with...
Could you clarify about the number of vehicles? Because I knew, I was asking about that red and white vehicle up in the garage that's taking up a place, and it seems to me that that should be assessed to the Internal Services Fund, given it's, I mean, you know, I'm just the citizen, I went up a floor and I said, "What's that?" And then the next time I went up there, it's, "What's that? Why is that parked there?"
Where is it? I know you're...
I'll talk to you about it later, but I think, I want to know, there's more than 165 vehicles in the city, aren't there?
Okay.
All those La Bamba's that are around that we're, that we drive all over town all the time?
Then we just decide to get rid of about eight or 10 vehicles.
We could probably get rid of 25 more.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure about that one, and absolutely, I'm willing to discuss the number of vehicles and where they should be charged to.
Because I thought we said there were 41 in the Streets Department. Didn't you say that last time?
You mean, excuse me, but do I, I hear you're saying is assess...
Back to the department, yeah.
Back to the department from whence it came?
From where it's used.
Right.
That's what she's saying, yeah. That's her argument.
Are we talking about internal fund or other admin?
No, yeah, no, no. Internal service or, yeah. As far as the vehicles, the department, say the Street Department has 50 vehicles, and they are serviced by the mechanics who are paid out of the Internal Service Fund, which is not the Street Fund, even though they work near the service garage. So, yes, so we would assess the Street Department for the work done for the mechanics, along with every other department that has vehicles.
So other admin gets also charged, which is where the La Bamba car is?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Other admin gets charged, but not for vehicles?
No, oh, wait a second, the internal service doesn't, does other admin pay into internal services?
Other ad, no.
Other admin does not. What are you saying, not? Okay, I'm looking at one of these pages here, says other admin, 101, 120, number of vehicles, six.
Oh.
Cost per vehicle, $10,660.
Oh, 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 okay.
Now, this, I assume this page right here is the amount of money that's being put into internal services.
Yes.
So the, plus the computers for other admin.
Right.
So other admin's paying a total of $18,039, $18,039.38.
Yes, money absolutely goes back and forth, because these are different charges.
Okay, so other admin, okay, that, that red car you're talking about up in the parked garage does pay internal services for its maintenance. Is that what you're asking?
I was looking for it, and I can't see it on here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, well, we didn't red highlight.
There are six vehicles listed in other admin.
No, no, it's not, I mean, it's not down there.
Is that where we think it is?
I don't know. I mean, so, when Kathy talks about the sewer fund not paying last year, that was a flat-out mistake.
Well, they only didn't pay at the very end.
Yeah.
This year, they're not paying.
Right, and so, I mean, I think that there was, it was just one of those things that wasn't detected.
I think it got enough off the budget for this year.
We're trying to come up with a strategy that's more rational, and, you know, it's just like, where do you get 300,000 for water? Water paid 300,000 into other admin, and, you know, is that viable?
If you look at our new calculations, we've got water and sewer as equal responsibility for that.
Well, they've always been equal, but I mean, Streets has never been charged, nor has Rec, and that's what we want to rectify, isn't it?
Oh.
For internal service, I thought they all...
No, no, other admin.
Other admin, okay, you're jumping one to the other here.
Streets has been charged, they are being charged this year, not as much as they should be.
Yeah, well, Andy has 77 in his budget, thousands, as opposed to 7,000.
The general fund administrative support that we've had have been Streets, Community Center, Recreation, parking garage, water, sewer, and internal service. But, yeah, sewer did not have anything in their budget this year to transfer to.
Well, they, they had it in the budget, but it was not appropriated, isn't it?
Right, right.
Yeah, and it was a mistake, I think, because in worse years, it was taken.
Right. And it was last year, they just came up a little bit short at the end of the year. So, yeah, feel free to look over these and ask questions.
Okay, so the other administration formula is essentially the number of transactions done through your office in terms of...
Well, we use that. Now, keep in mind that Ray used the Maximus study that some of you remember, that we paid for a few years ago, as a way, there are lots of ways that you can make those assessments, but this was the most practical way as far as who provides what services. Our office provides services to every department almost every week, and so by using our transactions, it's also based on the budget. So there are some budgets that are high, don't have as many transactions, and vice versa. So we took both of those things into account, come up with what we thought was a fair assessment. And then we reduced the actual assessment so as not to overcharge our own departments for, you know, work that we're doing, because we are actually here to support... for, you know, work that we're doing, because we are actually here to support them. But, you know, these proprietary funds are money-making and supposed to operate as a business, and as a private business, they would be paying overhead. They would be paying for these services that we provide.
They're supposed to break even.
Right.
Not break.
Right.
So I think-
So they should pay for these services unless they're, you know, unless they are losing money.
So it looks like, I think if I'm understanding the previous way the cost allocation was done for Other Administration was actually by percentage of people, full-time employees and such.
I don't know how that, we don't know that formula. And I just, we just want to move on from there.
Okay, well, if I'm reading correctly, it was a percentage, it was the number of full-time as a percentage and then somehow referenced with the actual budget they had, in other words, total budget. So you're doing, you're talking about doing a transaction versus number of transactions versus budget.
Transactions and budget.
And budget. Okay. I think they were using full-time employees and budget, that's earlier. If I'm reading the spreadsheets that are embedded in.
Don't know. Don't know.
I think it's better not to ask. Don't ask.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know and-
Just make it a whole cloth.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that's okay to know, but, you know, at this point, I just want to come up with what I think is more fair and move on from here. Okay, the next pages, and this is a little bit more, oh, no, this is one more, one more in the allocations by department. Has to do with employee parking in City Hall and the Law Administration Building. And in the past, because we have about 70 employees who park over there, there's been a transfer from the General Fund into the Parking Garage Fund. That's another appropriation that was not done this year.
Would that have been because it was almost paid off?
Well, that could be.
We put it in as a temporary measure to cover the cost of moving over to the-
That could be, because it's not a large amount and so I wasn't sure why that was left off of the budget, left out, however you want to say it.
Or it could be a mistake.
Yeah.
Could be a mistake.
You know, I'm not sure. In the past, we had done $800 a month, $9,600 a year, and this year there was nothing appropriated. However, I feel it's appropriate that the Parking Garage received money for parking. Those are spots that otherwise would generate revenue for the Parking Garage. And again, this is something that council can say, you know, I disagree. But my issue here, and I'll get to it again, and you'll see why I think the Parking Garage Fund needs that money, for one thing, and that it is an appropriate use of the funds. And so this, this next page is calculations. We used per month, the Hunter License amount. So actually, we were going to charge a little bit less, well, no, actually more money for the year for the number of employees. So you can look at that, see what you think is fair or not. Okay, the next one.
Well, Kathy, one of the problems is that last year, sort of, you know, again, we held our nose and continued on, but we had interns as needed parking in their garage and, you know, and that's a lot of money that funds probably shouldn't be charged for.
That's true.
And that's where some of this comes from, because that's equivalent to extra $65 or $75 a month for each of these people who are interns half-time. I mean, I don't generally park in the garage unless I'm here-
Right.
-in the building. I don't, I mean, that's-
And other people do. Well, it's something to look at, but as I said, the Parking Garage Fund is probably going to need the money, if, you know, just not the only reason to do, make these payments, but as we get to this, some of this next information, you'll see, because even though we've paid that off, paid off the note, you know, there are repairs and constant maintenance that need to be done in that fund. Okay, the last, the next one, like the last one, but the next one, has to do, this is definitely accounting process, prior year adjustments. When we get ready for an audit, we have accountants who put together our financial statements for the audit because you-
Are you on this one?
Prior year adjustments.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And they put our financial statements together, because as you know, we operate separately. All the revenue and expenses are separate. On a cash basis, they put it together on accrual basis and so that then it can be audited. What happens is the accountants then give that information to our auditors and sometimes the auditors make adjustments. And what happened in the past, and there's some backup here to show you, an email that went from the auditor to our accountant to make this adjustment, but was never, you know, given to us. And at the, you know, every year we see this, the first one, the first Street Rehab, we see, we see this amount that we're carrying over that should be taken off the books. I'll try to make this more simple. In 572 Street Rehab, $237,000 needs to be reduced in the Street Rehab Fund. That money was shown as revenue, it was spent out of an escrow account, but never reduced in the revenue account line. Does that make sense? The second one, there are three of these. The income tax mix, a couple of you will recall on council at the end of 2003, 2004, I mean, we adjusted the income tax mix a couple of times at the end of the year because of cash problems that we had in a couple of departments. And it was incorrectly applied and then corrected by the auditor in the report, but our, our books are not showing this. These adjustments were not then given to us to make in our books. So as you see here, there are some negatives in the General Fund and Street Rehab and then some positives in these other funds. Streets, Community Center, Community Center Debt, and Capital Improvements. So Street Rehab is taking a hit by making these adjustments, but actually, they don't really have that money and it's just that these adjustments aren't made in our system. So when we give you fund reports and things like that, you know, they're inflated. We can talk about this more if you have any more questions. Kind of late to go into too much detail, but those are two things. And one thing I would point out is that the Capital Improvements Fund would get additional money that could be transferred by council into Street Rehab if you didn't want to have Street Rehab take these, both of these hits. You know, that would be at the council. The third one, as far as these auditing, prior year adjustments, has to do with the on-account money that comes into Utilities. And I guess this has to do with the software and I'm not sure why. In years past, the on-account money, which is money that people overpay one month and then, so it's credited, so it's put in this on-account account line. And then they get credit the next time around, but, but that money is still shown in the on-account line. Several years ago, it was put in the Water Fund. In 2004, Utilities changed their software company and the on-account money started being put into the Parking Garage Fund. I guess because there wasn't very much action in the, you know, it was a way to keep track of the money. The problem is that the software system needs to find a way to bring that money back in and apply it to the fund when somebody pays their bill-
Maybe we do that now.
And gets the credit. You know, our clients, customers get their credit, but the money then is not reduced in, in the on-account fund. So this money would come out of the Parking Garage Fund and be applied to Water Sewer and Garbage, as you can see on this page.
Some of it might be Parking Garage Fund.
Actually, it would. I do have that in my notes.
Okay, good enough, all right.
I do have that in my notes.
They prepay a month or something?
Yep, yep. Some of that money would actually stay in the Parking Garage. It would be reclassified, though, I guess was on account to Parking Garage revenue.
Well, these are past anyway, this is.
Uh-huh.
So the money's going to be switched back with an ordinance?
Right.
Yep.
I know. And then, of course, we hope to have the software system have things adjusted so that this doesn't happen for next year, and these figures actually don't show this year.
So there's the Southside Water Project, Paul.
Yeah.
Where is it coming out of now?
Well, actually, see, Water Sewer and Garbage are going to get a little shot in the arm.
Okay.
But the Parking Garage will suffer, as I said, that's why.
It's a good place.
Would like the Parking Garage to study that.
He keeps asking me where it's going to come from. A mistake.
A software glitch. How convenient.
How convenient. We were saving it.
Praying for that mistake. As I said, these, these pages are backup about what the auditors did that then if we aren't notified. And the last page is the fund, just the one page, part of the fund report that shows the negatives. It didn't add, Ray didn't add the positives on there, which you could do, but it just shows the negatives of what will happen to these funds with these negative adjustments. And as I said, some of the funds will get an increase in their fund balance, but these are the ones that will get a decrease.
So what is this?
So, Street Rehab and the Parking Garage will take a pretty big hit. So something to think about, although these are auditor issues that really should be corrected in our, in our system before the end of the year.
Can't you just take this under your general powers that we gave you last week?
Well, yeah. I'm going to try to do that.
Can you just, the auditors do this, but the money is still over in the Parking Garage Fund.
Right, right.
So it's sort of an auditor's reality until you switch it over.
It is.
Okay.
It is.
We're sitting here going.
Well, I guess the big thing is, yeah, some of these adjustments that I've talked about probably could be done by us because they are bookkeeping adjustments, but I thought you should know about the changes in the fund balances and what this is going to affect.
So we don't get shocked?
Yeah, because we're doing a lot of them all at once. And then if we want to, as I said, do any appropriations for the end of the year for sewer to pay into the Internal Admin-
You need it.
-or the Parking, or the General Fund to pay Parking Garage. I can throw these out there, throw some figures out there and you can decide if you, if you want to do these-
Since water's overpaid, sewer should probably pay water.
Right.
Because they paid 300,000. I mean, what we really don't know is how much we need to have in Other Admin, and if you could come up with, that is, you know, because then we'd know how to allocate. I mean, that's a different way to approach it, instead of saying, this many cars, this many computers, since I don't know that we have the complete count anyway.
That's a good point.
Are you asking just to look at expense or?
Just a, I mean, are we talking, do we need a million? Do we need a half? Do we need a fourth in Other Admin? You know, I guess-
Well, you are, right, and we can go in and see who's, who's paid out of there and some of the general expenses.
I mean, that's somewhat what you do already with Internal Service.
Right.
Because you have that discrete number of mechanics and you charge back the parts and other than that. So, I mean, just a different way to approach it, then we'd be able to, sort of, this is the, this year has ended, let's think about how we could do it right.
And that's another thing, is I wanted this out there to adjust budgets for next year, so you're working on budgets and then we'll know what, what should be put in the budgets for next year, so. Okay, I'll put something together, I'll see from the auditors what we can go ahead and do on our own, and then anything that needs council action, I'll put it out and see if we can start that through. And then you can, like I said, you can read through this packet and if anybody has any more questions or anything like that, but Ray's put a lot of time in on this and a lot of thought and, you know, but we are open to suggestions.
And we could apportion it according to the proprietary funds and their relative weight.
Right.
Because, you know, like, take 300 from here and 250 from there-
Yeah.
And, you know, is that what you need or is it just there? Is it 600,000?
Yeah. Well, yeah, if you, if you look through this and you see on the one page, some of these formulas are pretty, are similar to what was done in the past, but several of them are very different, much larger, much smaller.
This is my baby, that's why.
Yeah.
I'm just jumping around. I mean, it just seems like there, there's got to be a better way.
Sure. Right, and like Paul's trying to figure out the formulas that were used in the past and we really haven't been able to do that, and I'm not willing to spend any more time on that. I just want to move forward.
How much do we need? How will we allocate that?
I find it fascinating, it's like trying to untangle a little knot, you know, you can-
There's probably a little multiplier somewhere in that spreadsheet, too, if you ever find it.
There's a bunch of multipliers in that spreadsheet.
Sometimes I wonder if he has the most recent spreadsheet.
Wouldn't that be funny?
Or the same one I got, I don't know. But as I said, we're not going to spend any more time trying to figure out that we have in-
I guess my concern is that I worry that we'll miss something that's embedded in there that I'm not aware of, whether it's the incremental, you know, I think, I look at the Other Admin mix-up and it goes all the way back down to the longevity calculations in terms of people's pay, so it's adding, it's not only, you know, full-time employees, it's also the pay which is included in the budget. And it is a mess, that's, it's got, what, it's got about six different worksheets and they're all interlinked various ways.
Well, and as I said, there are different ways you can do this.
Yes.
Even using the Maximus study that we have, there are different things that you can look at, you know, building size, there's just all kinds of ways of looking at that, but, you know, we picked what we thought was fair and straightforward and, but, you know, we're willing to make adjustments and open for changes. But as I said, I'd, I'd like it to be, have a formula and to be fair across the board.
I think that people need to know in a systematic way how much money is going from the funds into-
And why we're charging that.
And why we're doing it. And that's, fundamentally, it was part of a spreadsheet. I mean, I was personally shocked when I found the numbers out because it had really changed over time.
It has changed over time.
Yeah.
And it's gone up and down from time to time and, so.
So it's an improvement and I appreciate the work on it since this is my baby.
As I said, Ray has done a lot of work on these and trying to find those adjustments for the auditors, that was hard. And they've just been buried in there for years and, and every year we have these adjustments and we're like, why are we carrying this? You know, it's like reconciling our bank statements from one year to the next, you just don't want to carry that over. So we'd like to get our books in order. So I think that's it for me. Unless anybody has any more questions.
I'm sorry, Jim, it's just my baby.
We're done. You tell the bees.
Okay, yard waste, pick up, I've got it.
One more thing, I did pass out some information about the budgets and the different breakdowns from various departments and different formats. I think you each got a copy of it, both Police, Fire, and Recreation, as well as Code.
These are responses to our earlier request that department heads, department heads look at potential reductions in your budgets.
Gives you a starting point of what to ask and what to look at.
There's, with respect to our discussion last week, this is a preliminary argument that I'll start to work on yard waste. I'm going to talk into, we're talking to trees and things like that. Currently, we are, we have three different programs that are ongoing. One of them is the, dare I say, Christmas Tree Pickup and, which is, occurs right after Christmas. Then there's the Leaf Pickup, which is pretty common, I think, if you go to most cities, they have some sort of device to suck up the leaves that people who want to have them removed, take out to the curb. And now, we also have this other program that is either really cheap or very expensive, but, you know, now the current view is with the price of gasoline, we really can't afford to keep doing this. And we would also like to move in the direction of an approach that has the potential to become a compost-friendly system. So here's what we have, this is, I'm going to take the heat on this, I don't mind taking the heat on this, because you have something free and you're removing free and it's always bad. I personally don't think you should ever do anything for free in a case like this because it's, eventually, somebody has to pay, because the, the Street Fund has been paying, subsidizing it all these years. Yard waste means grass clippings and twigs prepared for removal in such a manner as to be ready for composting. I'm not sure about twigs, but we could call it vegetative tree-type material, you know, it could be bigger than a twig. I think a twig's as being very small, but we could define that a little bit better. I think a twig's just being very small, but we could define that a little bit better. And then we have, I would personally like to define a time period in which yard waste would be placed at the curb side and collected on Friday. Therefore, there would be no confusion about whether it's garbage, it will be yard waste. It will be in craft bags and tagged with a $2 sticker purchased in advance for utilities billing. Then, at that point, although we don't say it, the current practices and the current users would call in and get on the list to be picked up on that Friday. Yeah, 50-pound craft bags, what's matter? They can buy them at the Lowe's or at C and E.
Well, the, we continue to hear that the paper bags won't work in our current situation where we're taking, we're.
Taking them out to Cannonville.
Shredding them and then taking them out to Cannonville because they, we had a litter problem of all things. Because they just don't get chewed up enough, and then they fly. And that the strings on these craft bags also have affected. Well, that's what I think.
You mean like in a, like a cat food bag that they use for this?
I think actually the craft bags, they, they don't disintegrate whole. They, they disintegrate into pieces, and they just fly away. So you end up with, you know, your craft bag, you know, piece like this can fly around. So this will be on 50.
So they're shredding them before they go out there?
They don't shred, well, they try to shred them.
Wait a minute, get your story straight.
We don't have a shredder. I asked, can we shred them? And they say just, no. He says it clogs up the chipper. He says you can't put yard waste through a chipper. You can put wood through a chipper, but not yard waste like clippings.
I think some composting facilities do.
Well, we buy, we're buying a chipper then. Is that what you're telling me?
I don't know what we're doing. All I'm trying to do is get relief from what I heard was a big expense all of a sudden in the street department. Last year it wasn't, this year it is.
Four dollars a gallon made a big expense.
Okay, and then this tag yard waste placed at the curb side. I personally think plastic is garbage. And the quicker we get rid of it, the easier it will be to go in to the next level of solid waste management.
We need to increase the sticker, the $1.50 sticker.
To $2, yes.
To $2. So it doesn't matter whether they put, I can take that bag and stick it out there in plastic, and it'll become garbage with the $2 sticker.
Right.
Or I can stick it in paper and become, so somebody's going to have to buy paper bags if they want that yard waste composted utility.
Well, this is out here, and, you know, it will go up eventually. But the thing is that we have to ramp it up. I mean, so things change. When we started doing recycling, things change. They always change, but let's.
Question one. What's to prevent me, now, this is what my father does. He takes the branches and he throws them out in the street. That's because all the cars run over them and turn them into mulch, okay? This is his method of getting rid of yard waste, okay?
You passed, the ordinance you passed was the 18-inch rule, so.
He throws longer than 18 inches.
Luckily for him, he's not here.
So essentially, what's to prevent me from taking my, and I don't own a blower, but I can get a leaf blower and blow it out to the middle of the street. And therefore, it ceases to be my problem, and I save $2.
I don't know.
I don't know. Okay, so we need to increase the sticker prices.
Yeah, that'll be good. We can just circumvent all the requirements and do that.
No, I'm, I'm looking at this stuff. So anything that doesn't get picked up, anything in a plastic bag will not get picked up as yard waste.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I may have to go talk to Andy about it. But, you know, I've talked to, if you think about moving to Jeffers as a composter or to CFI on Voor Ridge, then the craft bags are the way to do it. I mean, big cities like Pittsburgh and other cities use this approach. It's not unusual.
I do have specific yard waste guidelines from the street department that perhaps should be included. It talks about length, the length of the woods and what have you.
I, you know, we looked for that today for about an hour, trying to figure out, like, I thought there were specs on the size of the twigs.
There's an actual paper that, I don't know if it's in the code. I just know from Andy's street department, it's.
We looked, we looked. We tried everything. And so, yeah, then you could actually.
I can't remember where I've seen it, though.
Yeah.
I'm not for my mother-in-law, so I don't know.
And I think that it is understood, and, and let me underline this. It is understood that the service director, the mayor, the director of streets, or anyone could designate a time when there is ice storm blowdown in February, that they would be picking up pieces of wood. That is understood. This is already going on. It's just the charging for it that's a problem. So now that we've had this discussion, maybe other members of council have something they want to weigh in on this. Chris?
Yes. Madam President, I would, from acting president, I would support this from having talked with Street Director Stone about the cost for street department help that is devoted to picking this up per year, that I think that it would help us to implement such a program. He did make some comments about the compostability of the bags and that, that we'd need to deal with it, but didn't sound like it was insurmountable. And also possible, and I need to clarify this with Andy, but I thought he said something about maybe bags and tags, trying to make it simpler, doing a one-step, purchasing both through the city. I'm not sure if that's cumbersome or not, but he just mentioned that as a possible. You know, make it easier for people, rather than having them having to go to Lowe's and come to us. You know, that we might be able to do that. Maybe we can find something that's more easily compostable.
I think we could do that in the future. But I think, you know, the reason why I was trying to keep it really simple, so that, to see if it would work.
Okay.
And, you know, then we could go with imprint, ones that are imprinted at City of Athens.
Sure.
They cost 42 cents a unit if we buy them with our imprint on them. And we could do that. And we could have Roger pick them up on Friday. He said he'd do it for, with Athens County Recycling or whatever it's called. Our vendor, it would be a dollar.
So you prefer?
No, 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 no. This is for the future. No, no.
I'm asking, that's all.
We bought a truck. We're trying to keep it simple for the first time, just to see if it'll work.
Okay.
So that's, we're just, you know, like, sticking the little toe in the water to see if it's possible to get this to work. Alahu, do you have anything?
If we do proceed with this, I would much rather see us just do it and do it right. And have it be half as expensive, it'd be a dollar a bag, and have them get city bags.
The city bags are going to cost 42 cents a unit. We have to recoup the cost of, or else why bother?
We could build it into the, build it into the cost of the bag when they pick it up downstairs, if they buy them from the utilities billing office or wherever they buy them from. So instead of a dollar charge, they, they have a sticker on it, so they pay a buck fifty for, for everything. But I, I think if we do it first at $2, and they have to go to Lowe's or somewhere to get their bags, I don't know that's a good metric for doing it with city bags at a dollar, $1.50 a bag.
We're not doing city bags until we know it'll work, I don't think. I mean, I just, we have a lot of stickers, and Ray said to me, I asked him, he said they have a bajillion of them. And so, we can use those as our trial basis. And then, you know, this is just an idea. You can shoot it down and say, you want us to buy imprinted bags? But the trouble is, I remember when we bought the recycling containers, and the bags wouldn't be that much. But, you know, they were just like in the way. And it'll, it could be a very cumbersome business. And we'd have to store them out at the parking garage, or out at the service garage in the rain.
Where they are now.
I know, but I was joking with you about the, the bags. Other ideas. This is by no means, I mean, I've been thinking about it for a long time just because of the cost factor, but, Jim?
Just a quickie. A lot of people in my neighborhood were out this past weekend, which is November, whatever it was, but it was past November 4th, pulling up dead impatiens and stuff. So I would, I'd probably just suggest that we extend this to the end of November or something.
I was trying to make it sort of compatible with the plowing season. I actually picked, pulled up a few things at my daughter's house and put them on the edge of the curb to go with the leaves.
Put them out in the middle.
No, no. I mean, it was just, I raked, and they came with it. I'm sorry.
Okay, and.
A good idea. Maybe we can look at that as a change.
You know, if we're going to, following just, just a thought about Alahu's suggestion, if we're going to be talking to several stores in town who, who would provide these bags, could we not, could we entrust them to sell our stickers also? Be reimbursed at some point? Maybe.
That is done in some places. I mean, not the stickers, but the city bags actually.
The city bags we could do. I don't know if the stickers. They'd have to mark them up.
I don't mind trying it as a, I don't mind trying it as an experiment with.
Okay. I'm sorry this is going on.
Then we can streamline it as, as we go.
It's just the first effort. Notice we proposed to send it back to the street fund, all the funds. So that would mean that it would be subsidized to some extent by utilities billing, which is water, sewer, and garbage. But would still take care of this. Kent?
Madam President. I have some concerns. My perception or belief is that many residents will decline to use this since it will require or necessitate extra hoops to jump through. And, and also people on a budget might run into problems as well. Not quite, I understand the idea of accountability and not giving something away for nothing. But I also know that this is probably, I think this has been a part of the city's upper endus for how long? I mean, it's.
Probably 10 years. Used to be a drop-off. And we could go to drop-off where we wouldn't charge as much if we could find somebody to staff the drop-off on a Saturday morning. But the problem with drop-offs is some people come afterwards and then drop it off, and then it's a mess.
And add a couch, too, while they're at it.
Yeah, and they rest their garbage.
Well, with Big Brother watching, we can just tag their, their license, you know. Just have a little camera back there.
A camera?
Sure, hiding back there.
Then we'll have to charge 2.50. Come on, Kent.
The camera catches those vandals.
You know, Kent, in the best of worlds, what you would say to these people is, get a mulching mower. I mean, I, now I'm being Big Brother. Yeah, mulch it into your, it's a much better term if it's mulch. Get, go to CFI and take training on how to do a compost heap in your backyard. And, you know, our soil is so poor in this area, and the compost really does make a difference.
Sure.
You know, so, and we provide those options. This is for the people who want the pristine lawns, this tight grass, and they rake it. I don't know. We may have to agree to disagree now.
That's okay. Correct me if I'm wrong. You did say that the mayor or the city service safety director would have permission to override this.
They currently.
If there's, if there's an emergency, if there's windstorm.
They'd do it now.
Tornado, hurricane, Christmas.
75 mile an hour winds. No, holiday trees.
And usually good growing season for lawn grass?
No, hurricanes.
So this is not, it almost implies this is not going to cover leaves in general.
No, leaves are a separate entity. You have that system in place. We bought that very expensive truck to suck them up.
People still bag them, though, and they bag them in plastic.
I know.
And they get hauled out to Cannonville, just like lawn clippings. So do we not pick them up?
Continue with that process?
What?
I said if you wish to continue that process. I know there have been times when people have called me up by rate because they had their leaves all bagged up at the street, and they got dumped out, so the sucker could come along and pull them up. And so, and I said, I'm sorry, but I'm not accountable for that. I don't, that's an administrative thing.
Actually, a lot of people grab the leaves, too, because they, they want some compost.
Compost, yes. How many thousand? All right, so think about it, and we'll come back to this again. I have no miscellaneous. Do you have miscellaneous?
I have one more, real quick. So the cost is $2 because the stickers are $2, David?
Yes, it costs that much, too. If you start costing out the, replacing the truck, paying the people, buying the gas.
I just mean the existing stickers. You said we have, we have a lot of stickers.
No, we're just, yeah, we, no, they don't cost anywhere near $2.
No, I mean, they're valued.
Value right now is 1.50.
Yeah, and we're going to raise it in that other one, too.
But it's not printed on there?
No, there's no dollar amount printed on it.
It's a little yellow sticker.
So one, one thing, if, if we don't want to start with $2, with the $2 per bag of yard waste, we could say one sticker will get you two bags taken away. That might just be more helpful.
Are you trying to increase your popularity in my neighborhood? As it stands right now, I am going to be a pariah for suggesting you pay for this. Suggesting some people should be paying for this. My goodness, it's a terrible thing.
It's not going to fly on the west side.
Yeah, okay. I'm willing to take it. I can handle it.
Blow it out to the street.
All right.